But we are at 7 o'clock, so Mrs. Hughes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 104-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier-News, Star-Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. Please rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that the governor's mask mandate is still in effect. We've got We've got one more week, guys, so I ask that you please wear your masks. The board does not condone any violation of that mandate. Can I have a roll call vote, Ms. Spitzer? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fetter?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Can I have a motion, please, for approval of the January 10, 2022 minutes, please? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you. We also need a motion for approval of the January 24 minutes. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you. I believe we have a student council report?
Kalia and Jasmine. Hi, guys. Come on down.
Good night. I'm Kalia, and this is Jasmine. We had several major events this month. Valentine's Day event, there was an online Google form that was sent out to the students and staff that gave them the option of sending it to a friend, secret admirer, or teacher. We had many forms turned in. We also had back-to-school night on February 17th. The Black Student Union has created daily announcements celebrating the accomplishments of notable figures in Black History for Black History Month. You can learn more about this rich history from the detailed bulletin board the BSU put together outside of the auditorium. YAG and Speech and Debate are beginning to move forward with their activities. If interested, hear about competition, contact Mr. Lenord.
Some upcoming events we have are we have multiple performing arts events coming in the next few months. The Thespian Society is holding their spring musical, La Maise, on March 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Our music department is holding a spring orchestral concert on March 16th. Spring sports are starting up this March with preseason meetings and tryouts. Baseball, softball, lacrosse, track and field, golf, and boys volleyball are among the sports offered. Roll Cappa History Honors Society is hosting a history bowl. Every week, there is a round of trivia. The society is split across teams of five to compete now until the end of March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, we have some correspondence that is listed there. The PDFs of each can be found on the board docs website, and then we'll move into the superintendent's report. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes, and thank you, everybody. I'm going to go out of order a little bit from these. I have a couple of things to share, some updates on tonight, and I just want to begin by just sharing that we're continuing to watch the events unfolding in Eastern Europe with a lot of distress. We're worried about and working with students who are directly impacted by the war in Ukraine, who have friends and loved ones in harm's way. But in that, I just want to share tonight, we are thankful to have the privilege of safety tonight, with the right to gather for the important deliberation that boards have to do, as we have gathered tonight. So I'm thankful for that, as I am concerned. I have some COVID updates for everyone, and this is a quick follow-up from the report I gave on Valentine's Day at our last meeting. Each board member, you have a copy, a printed copy, of what I'm going to project up here for the audience. I do have to apologize, the print on some of these slides is small, as we talk about the protocols on the opening plan. All of this information is and will be available on our website as well. But let me make sure I can get the projector working here. Okay, are you seeing my title there, COVID update, everybody? Yes, all right, thank you. So tonight's update is a follow-up from the 14th, and it comes with, again, a lot of gratitude for the position that we're in right now, and a lot of thankfulness for being in a good position, one of the best that we've been all school year. Last week, we had very few students out of school on quarantine, either for close contact or for illness with COVID-19. In fact, today, I think I counted five students total, out of our 27, 2800, who were out on quarantine or close contact as a result of either exposure to or testing positive or being ill with COVID-19. So the rapid decline from January, it's really been dramatic. We saw over 300, nearly 400 cases in January, and we're down to a much lower number for February. And I wanted to point out specifically, the need for online learning, we saw a dramatic increase through January in the response that our teachers and counselors had to deploy to reach students who were home on quarantine. We had nearly 5,000 sessions online for Zoom or Google Meet during the month of January. And the thing to remember there is that a teacher might open a session, or a counselor might open a session once in the morning, and might keep it open for several blocks. So that's not a one-to-one for blocks. So the number of blocks that were covered by remote instruction was actually much higher. But the decrease now, in February, we saw fewer than 500 sessions, again, as a result of the case counts and quarantine dramatically decreasing. Now, again, this is where it gets a little bit hard to read. I tried to blow it up for folks in the audience, but I'm going to walk you through the important pieces as a refresh, really, from what we spoke about on the 14th. This was the opening plan that we started the school year with. And the couple of things that I want to point out here are, A, that we've been following this plan without deviation since the beginning of the school year, and it's dictated every step we've taken. For example, when we went into red, we went on to early dismissals, exactly as this plan indicates. So this plan guided our every step. It's always been available on our website, so this has been the plan that we continue to refer to with folks who have questions. Now, the one thing I do want to point out here also is that, under yellow, if you look at the masking row, which is the second row on the chart, under yellow, what it tells us is that unless there's a mandate, and we are in yellow, then we will be mask optional. That's a posture we took this past summer, when we were in yellow and there was no mask mandate. The mask mandate kicked in again in August. So we are ready, without any change to our plan, as I've announced to the community over the past week or so, we're ready to move to a mask optional stance on March 7th, without any change to our plan. We do, however, based on some lessons learned and some other things that we've been working on with the Department of Health and others, do have an opportunity to make some changes to our plan, so that if we do find ourselves in a tough spot in the future, we can have some different responses. And again, all of this is to prioritize the time in person in school. The early dismissal that we went on for a few weeks in January was very difficult. It was really difficult for all of us, because we miss having everybody here all day. But we did learn a lot about what it looks like to do four lunches. If we need to do four lunches, we do see that as a tool that can keep people here all day long. We don't like the four lunches. Nobody likes the four lunches. I don't like the two lunches. But four lunches allows us to get the spacing that is required under a red kind of context. So as we look at some changes, it's getting a little more complicated, but I want to point out a couple of things here. So we believe that we can stay full day through any eventuality, now that we've been through red and we understand what red looks like, we understand what contact tracing and scheduling look like in red. We never hit red last year. We believe that we can stay full-time all day, and that we wouldn't have to go to an early dismissal unless we got to some of those higher levels of spread, like we saw. We also see here that we believe that unless there's a mandate, that we can work with the Department of Health to determine the appropriateness of various other kinds of steps here. So masking, grouping, sanitization, levels of sanitization that we perform, we believe that we can work with the Department of Health. The thing that you've heard me complain about, maybe a little endlessly this year, is that the Department of Health, the data that we received was neither timely nor localized. So we feel that we've been getting much better data and a much better partnership with them over the past month or so. We feel now that we're in a position to make more flexible decisions with them, based on our local conditions in the moment. So this is a more hopeful set of protocols. It does have us continuing to go mask optional on the 7th, because there's no mandate, but it also has us thinking more about maximizing in-person instruction for the full day. Now, I do want to point out one thing, and I'm going to ask you to look at the masking row here in particular as we turn to the next slide. Notice that this says masking is required on transportation. That's what we talked about on the 14th, on Friday, minutes after I sent an email to the entire community saying that we were going to have to remain masked on transportation. The CDC announced that masks were no longer going to be required on transportation. However, over the weekend, we did receive indication from the Department of Health that we should continue to remain masked on transportation until the 7th, until the 7th. And the reason for that, there's a reason for that, I understand, as a school leader, in the sense that there are people who are going to be anxious, there are people who are not waiting for this moment, who are in some ways dreading this moment of taking the masks off, and we need to get a chance over the next week or so to figure out how to work with those folks, so that we're not exposing them to additional anxiety on their transportation or in school. So we have a lot of work to do over the next week to prepare for the 7th, both on our buses and in classrooms. So the actual change here, you notice, as we flip to the last slide here, that required-on-transportation piece in the masking row disappears, and then we fall down to that gray area that says, "In any of these phases, we will work with the Department of Health to determine if there are additional things that we have to do, or if there are things that we have the opportunity to step back on." So the more timely, more localized data from the Department of Health is allowing us to make much more nimble and flexible decisions, and we're thankful for that tonight as well. So this is the changes to, in fact, Mr. Klein, you can raise the screen. I'm done with the screen now. These changes allow us to be more nimble, more flexible, with better partnership from the Department of Health. You have tonight, in the agenda, a motion that is asking for your approval on these. I'll talk about that in a minute, after I give you a few more updates on a couple of additional things. I mentioned on the 14th that we would be bringing our 2022-2023 calendar for approval soon, and that we were waiting on the fate of a bill working its way through the legislature that would give us a little bit more flexibility on using virtual days instead of snow days. I am not going to get rid of snow days, all right? But I do see the potential opportunity to approach that a little bit differently, and what that would allow us to do is to consider dates like Juneteenth in June as a holiday for the district, you know, things that we could get a little bit more flexibility on our calendar. Thank you. I've never gotten applause in the middle of my report, Ms. Spitzer. Can that be reflected in a minute? I should say more things like that. We also have an adjustment to this year's calendar make, but we're going to wait until March to do that. The results of Friday's snow day is that we have to adjust our current calendar as well. And the only adjustment there is that we're going to reduce the number of emergency days that we have left, and the news there is that we have no emergency days left, as a result of Friday's. So if we do have weather issues or any other issues between now and a time when those are less likely, as we get into the spring, we do have to look at things like spring break and other eventualities to make up some of those days, just to let you know. I've been pleased with how we've leveraged virtual days this year to reduce that impact, so right now, if we're lucky, we will be all right. Also, on the agenda, you have my HIB and suspension report down there. There are a couple of HIBs for you all to approve tonight. Staff and student recognition is on here as well. I've been pleased to continue to work with Mr. Brant and his team on those very important programs, and continue to just be pleased that everyone on that list receives lots of incredible nominations. Our staff, all-stars are there. I guess we don't have the students this time around, right? Got it. And we all...
Yeah, students are...
Prior page, there we go. So, and the thing that I want to share with the students, about the students, what I always talk about there, is that they aren't always recommended just for improving their grades or working hard on something that's difficult. The words that I see more and more often in those teacher nominations for student of the month is "help." These are students who help other students. And I always want our students to understand that the very little things that you do for one another are noticed, the very big things that you do for one another certainly are noticed as well. But the very little things, when you all hold the door for each other, or you prop open that door to get that two-way traffic going, because there's a little bit of a traffic jam, just know that that's adding nicety and niceness to our campus, and that's the kind of thing that we always want you to know we notice. All right, so under my report, as I mentioned, you have some HIBs to approve. Later in the agenda, you have an organizational item to approve, the opening plan adjustments that I presented back on the 14th and recapped for you tonight. It includes the removal of the requirement for masking on transportation. I'm going to ask that you hold any questions or discussion from the board on those items until we get to that item in the agenda, just in case, I don't want us to get ahead of any public comment that might be relevant to the COVID plan. So hold your questions and comments on the COVID changes until we get to the motion and the second there, down in that section of the agenda. And with that, Mrs. Hughes, thank you. I'm all done.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
And I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to affirm HIBs 23, 24, and 25, please? So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to our first residence forum. I want to remind everyone, and for those of you who are not familiar, this first public session is for items that are on the agenda for action only. So this is not general comments. We'll have that later. This is for action items on the agenda only. So we got a lot of folks here tonight. I'm smiling under my mask. Can I see a show of hands, just to get a sense of who intends to speak, how many folks intend to speak, so we can...
In the first one?
Yeah.
Agenda items only.
Yeah. I also want to speak on the second, too, just to gauge. Yeah, so, and on the second, for general comments, how many folks are we looking at, just so we have an idea of timing? Okay, thanks. So before we get started with public comment, I'd like to say a few words about kindness and respect. This community has been through a challenging two years. We've all worked very hard to support our administration, our staff, our teachers, our parents, our greater community, and most importantly, all of our students. That will never change. That is our primary goal. We understand that there are many folks who may not agree with steps that the district has taken along the way, and those people have the right to be heard and to have their voices heard and speak tonight, or any other night during public session. We are here to listen to everyone. However, before you step up to the podium to speak, I ask that you please take a moment and think about how your comments may affect another person in the room, watching on Zoom, or may hear about it later from someone else. Please hold yourself accountable to the same standards that I assume you expect of your own children, and that we expect in the Hundred and Central community, of our students and of our staff. No matter how passionately you may feel about a topic, please remember that what you say, and sometimes more importantly, how you say it, can and will have a powerful effect, either positively or negatively, on those who are listening. So on behalf of the board, we ask that you be respectful, kind, and courteous in your comments, not only today, but in all future board meetings. Personal attacks against individual board members, staff, administration, students, or other speakers will not be tolerated. We are all... We are all part of this Hundred and Central community, and we owe it to each other, but most importantly, to our children, who are listening and watching, to prove that we can disagree without demonizing each other. So please, let's start by setting that example tonight. So finally, in light of the numbers of folks who want to speak tonight, I would like to ask the board, if anybody was willing, to bring a motion to change the maximum time that each speaker can speak tonight, from five minutes to three minutes, for tonight's meeting only, in the interest of allowing as many people the opportunity to speak tonight.
So move.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? So we will start with our first public session. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. So we're going to start our first public session, again, on agenda items only. If you're interested in coming up to the mic, please come up, state your name and address for the record, write it down, and let us know what the comments are with agenda items only. No. Okay, so I'm going to close the first residence forum, and we will move on to organizational items. So all we have under that is the motion that Dr. Moore was referencing earlier, to authorize revision of the district's safe opening plan. So do I have a motion and a second on that?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Spitzer. We'll now move on to our committee reports. Student Life and Program, Mr. Richard, do you have an update for us?
No update from our last discussion. Previous board meeting, we discussed the details of the items on which we are voting tonight. There are several items for action tonight. The one item is policies second reading. We discussed these policies last time. Second item is an action research project proposal from one of our staff members, the details of which were discussed last time as well, and the supporting paperwork is available in board docs. And finally, we have action on approving tuition and related transportation for a student to attend the Newgrange School, and that's it. So having said that, I'd like to move items 1 through 3 for approval tonight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on these items? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Spitzer. Mr. Nickel, do we have an update on operations in transportation, please?
Yes, we have a small change to our long-range facilities plan, removing the 910 House Office and moving that to the 2324 budget year, and replacing that with new softball field dugouts. The only other item I have here is we have two policies on second reading. Policy 6422 for budget transfers and 6470 for payment of claims. With that, I'd like to move items, what am I, I, yeah, I-1 through I-10. I'll second.
Sir, a second, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Davidson, can we have an update, please, from personnel?
Yes, the Personnel Committee has four items for action this evening. We have salary guide adjustments, new advisors, curriculum instruction, professional development for the month coming up, so we need to approve that, and policies for second reading. There's four of them. Motion to approve Personnel Committee's item 1 through 4.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries. Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, we have an update from the Racism Equity and Diversity Committee?
Yes. Let's see, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 7. At the last board meeting, I had reported that the committee met with teachers and administrators, as well as students interested in the work, and those meetings allowed us to plan and prep for Hundred and Central's Equity Policy Project. The project team is now ready to move forward with the learning phase of the project, and will conduct interviews with five district leaders who already have equity-oriented policies in place. Once those interviews are completed, we can process what each group has learned, and then we will be moving on to the development phase. And I also want to really thank Dr. Warren for really helping to organize and coordinate a lot of that project work for us.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Do we have any additional board business at this time? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the second residence forum. I ask that, if you're interested in speaking, to please come up to the mic, state your name and address, and, yeah. Okay, so if you guys can slowly get in line, leave a little bit of spacing. Also, if everybody could just...
Yep.
Mr. Brant, can you get the lines sort of out toward the door?
Thank you.
And if there are folks in the Commons who are watching the live stream simulcast, this would be a good time for, and they want to speak, this would be a good time for them to come in as well, and get in line.
Yeah, maybe like a 20 minutes, we'll make it, and I'll just ask the board how they feel about. Okay. Do you want me to do that one, and I do the three minutes? Want me to keep track of the 20?
Yeah.
Okay. You ready? Okay. Everybody, our first speaker is ready, so I'd ask that everybody... Please give respect to the speaker. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vic Komishinsky, from the Reddington District, I believe. Good evening. My name is Vic Komishinsky, from the Reddington District, I believe. That's, do I need to include that? Okay.
That's fine.
Good evening, board members, ladies, gentlemen, and friends. My name is Vic Komishinsky. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a junior here at Central. I'm a varsity fencer, a classic literature fiend, a Catholic, and an LGBTQ ally. I'm here tonight to speak about something that concerns me. There has been a spread of anti-LGBTQ sentiment across New Jersey schools recently, and it has finally reached our shores. But this is not the first time history has tried to be erased in schools, and it probably won't be the last. I'd like to begin with a quote from Ben Franklin, "Whoever would overthrow the liberty of a nation must begin by subduing the freedom of speech." LGBTQ liberty, if we continue with Franklin's allegory, is being overthrown to cater to the beliefs of some audience members. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public school, and just as church and state are separate, church and public school are separate. LGBTQ curriculum does not corrupt students. If anything, it fosters a greater understanding and empathy between groups of people. We fear and even hate what we choose to not understand. Education bridges the gap between different people, and that's beautiful. We can't erase certain demographics from existence. LGBTQ people are people, just like everyone else is. LGBTQ history is history, just as Black history is history, and just as women's history is history. A lack of LGBTQ education won't stop students from being part of the LGBTQ community. Instead, it will isolate them. It will cause deeper divides. It will lead to higher rates of anxiety and depression and suicide. You can't stop teenagers from exploring. LGBTQ students will not disappear. I pray that Central's Board of Education can recognize the undeniable value of learning about different types of people and their history. It makes us better students, better scholars, and better people. We gain a wider understanding of the world and the wonderful people that have shaped our history. Team PYC does not speak for the students or staff of Central. They do not speak on behalf of religious individuals. We're all here because we realize the value of a diverse curriculum. If I was a parent paying valuable tax dollars, I would want my children to get a comprehensive education that doesn't cut corners when topics get sensitive. I suggest Team PYC moves on to the next school on their list, but I'm sure the overwhelmingly negative reaction they've encountered here will be similar across the state. LGBTQ history, books, curriculum, and students are here to stay, whether the public likes it or not. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everyone, if you're coming to speak, not only state your name and address for the record, but to please sign in on the sheet in front of you.
Yeah, that won't count against your time if you need a minute to sign in.
You can state your name and municipality you're from, and then sign in on the sheet as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victoria. I am the State Director of New Jersey Parental Rights and Team PYC Protect Your Children.
Excuse me, can you please state your municipality?
Flemington.
Thank you.
I have served in this capacity for a decade now, and I'm also an alumni. I'm here today with Team PYC and Gateway Church. We are parents, mothers, fathers, church leaders, Christians, and people of faith. We represent many from your district and tens of thousands from all over the state. We are very diverse, yet we have one thing in common: our desire to protect the children. Our faith and deeply held religious views are in peril. We are very concerned with the implementation of the LGBT and the inclusion lesson plans. We want to be clear. We care about each and every child, and we support and defend equality. We believe that all children should be cared for, respected, protected, and have equal rights to learn, to excel, and to reach their fullest potential, including Black, White, Rich, Poor, Gay, and Straight. However, treating all equally cannot mean that those with deeply held religious views are discriminated against. We are highly concerned that the glorification of the LGBT history...
Excuse me, folks, the rules apply to everybody with regard to respect to the speakers.
Thank you. We are highly concerned that the glorification of the LGBT history and the way you are now including indoctrination into everyday lesson plans and the new health curriculum is teaching lifestyles and life choices that stand 100% against our family values and the way that we practice our faith. We are here to say that to force the normalcy of the LGBT lifestyle onto our children and into your schools' everyday lesson plans is a stripping of our religious liberty and the parental rights of every parent who feels these subject matters are too mature to be taught to any child. Your students need to learn how to read, write, reason, and do arithmetic. They are not be sent to school to learn about the sexual orientations or sexual practices of others, but to be educated. The New Jersey Senate Budget Appropriations Committee statement reads that this bill, the LGBT curriculum bill, is modeled on a new law adopted in California, the Fair Act. The I in fair stands for inclusive. You must be aware that California has been on the frontrunner of many of the laws and policies that New Jersey LGBT laws and policy follow. California schools are now teaching pedophilia as a legitimate sexual orientation. Pedophilia is being taught in the classroom because they say it is, quote, "a sexual orientation." This is according to a top official from California Bealewes Alinda School District who admitted that this was being taught and that it would continue despite the outrage of parents. When the LGBT history bill was signed into law, there was no Q, only LGBT. However, the Q has appeared in many of your current lesson plans. Why did the Q magically appear? Will the P be next? Where will this stop? The Holy Word of God says, "Have nothing to do with the fruitless deeds of darkness, but rather expose them." It is shameful even to mention what the disobedient do in secret, Ephesians 5:11 and 12. Yet this curriculum's goal is to normalize these deep darkness and teach as a required part of the New Jersey learning standards. This is a true assault... No, they interrupted me. I...
No, no, folks, let it wrap up. Please wrap up.
This is a true assault to our deeply held faith in our religious liberty. Many of your students and their parents have come to me with heavy hearts and in tears because some of your lessons mock their faith, strip their innocence, and mock our God. This should not happen at 100 and Central. It should not be permitted by the board, by the school's administration. Too many 100 and families...
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. I've given you time to wrap up. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, come on up. Please state your name and municipality and sign in on the sign-in sheet, please.
Can I go?
Yeah, you can go.
Hi.
Is there a sign-in sheet up there?
Oh, you're passing it back.
Oh, you're passing it. Great, thank you. That's actually very smart.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Riggo Salvatiera. I am a senior at Central, and I am co-president of the Pulse Club, which is the school's gay straight alliance alongside my amazing friend Kayla Tankard. I know that there are people present tonight who came to argue a side that I oppose and whose main goal is to silence people who look and love like me. I would like to share a speech that fights against this narrative. The first book I ever read was the Bible. I vividly remember my mother's fingers directing my eyes to her favorite passages, reciting parables or lines during Mass as I tried to follow along to whatever the priest was saying. I remember trying my hardest to understand, to glean the message that everyone around me seemed to pick up on easily. Yet over the years, after attending Sunday School for weeks and taking the words of my teachers as gospel, I realized that the words I was reading was coming from a place that never made me feel accepted. The questions I had about myself, about my growing discomfort with my gender, or my feelings towards the boys and girls around me, I never felt like I could get answers to. I felt inadequate and small, as if when God said he made no mistakes, that I must have been his exception. So I turned to the library. I turned to novels set in magical schools, fantastical settings where history meets the present day, and love stories where the lines of gender blurred. And I realized that people like me were not mistakes. We were just as deserving of care and affection as those who found solace in worship. Reading allowed me to find the answers to the questions that had eaten at me for as long as I remember and find myself in the process, too, which is why when I hear those who feel like books like these should be removed from libraries, that familiar inadequacy and smallness groups back in, to me, it sounds like a dissonant choir telling me to go back into the closet, go back under the bed I called out of, go back into hiding, and refuse to show my head unless it is to plead forgiveness for being myself. To me, it sounds like politicians in Arizona, and Texas, and Georgia, and Florida, and the fact that it has made its way to the state that I call home is nothing short of sinful. To me, the most dangerous book being read is the Bible, and it's not even because of what it says, but because of the people who use it as a gavel to cast down judgment on anyone who do not feel is worthy of God's love. There is no defending taking place, only vicious attacks against an already vulnerable population in the name of protecting children, as if their hellish words are going to do anything but make their own children feel like they are perverse and unworthy. There is so much more that this school can do to protect LGBTQ kids and make sure we feel safe, but trying to take away the little victories we have is not the answer. And I want to use my voice to fight back against the flood of hatred, because I know that the truth I'm speaking does not support the exclusion of others, but the inclusion of everyone just like Jesus is love intended. And I pray that if there is an Almighty God, that he finds it in his heart to forgive you, because I'm not sure I or any of the other kids who came here in solidarity will be able to do so. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alana Henderson. I'm from Flemington. I'm a freshman here at 100 and Central, and I would just like to say that upon like the beliefs of the different sections of like people who are here, I am obviously showing what side I'm on, but I don't, I'm not going to like show hate towards the other side. But I'm just saying that I feel like if your child is like thinking about how they're feeling about like different books that are in the library, or like how you feel, I think they simply should just not be able to like pick up and read them. But there are many and many kids here who decide that they are very comfortable with it, and they feel a need that they want to read it because it makes them feel more comfortable, and it just like brings them happiness. Because like I have faced like hate for so long because of who I truly am, and I feel that showing myself has made me so much more comfortable, and it has shown so much more effort in my life, and it has made me feel so much better. And knowing that the school is behind me and like there's things I can talk to and people I can actually like see and like talk to, it makes me feel so much better. And I feel that, like you can be anti-gay, you can be gay, you can be whoever you want, but you can't be judged on who you are because that's who you feel you can meet. I'm Christian. I go to church. I help, I teach younger kids about the Bible. Like one of the first things, I've been going to church since I was, before I can remember. And I've never, I, with the Bible, I've read over millions of times, different passages. There's never been one passage that doesn't state that you can be who you are, love who you are. You love your neighbor as yourself. Your neighbor could be a girl, a boy, they can be non-binary, gender fluid, but you still love them as yourself. And you, there's no need to not love them equally as you do you love different people. It just shows how much you care about different people, and like it brings happiness to you. It doesn't really matter what other people think.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Maya Fetsor, and I'm from Delaware Township. I'm a senior here at 100 and Central, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Toby Chansky, who's in Les Mis and is also a senior here at 100 and Central. Toby, tonight has to say that he is a proud member of the queer community. What he has to say is how much the inclusion of LGBTQ topics in our curriculum and community has helped him be himself. He says, "I didn't come out as gay until my freshman year of high school because I was afraid of getting bullied or insulted for being who I am. The truth is, 100 and Central doesn't even have much of an LGBTQ content in our curriculum. Its extent is to the books in the IMC, Gender Studies, Team PEP, and a bit more. However, those few things are what young queer people need in our school and have to hold on to and what educates other students. These inclusions aren't pushing a gay agenda. They don't make people gay. They are providing queer people who have already and have always been queer an opportunity to be themselves and have knowledge that they, that there are people like them and who support them. Not only that, but it provides other students who don't identify as queer ways to be educated and understand what it means to be LGBTQ and the injustices and prejudices they have faced in the past in order to give them the respect they deserve as a human being. It is because of our school and our community that I can walk down the halls, wearing the clothes I want, acting the way I am, speaking the way I do, without fear but with pride. It has taken me a long time to be comfortable with myself, I won't lie. But because of this school, I found solace in the theater community and have learned to love myself for who I am, and have blossomed as a result. It was because of those loving people that I was able to come out, that I was able to proudly pursue my passion of musical theater. It is because of our school community that I'm able to feel comfortable talking with almost anyone and being myself no matter what. This is a life worth living. If these changes were to be made, I have no doubt in my mind that anti-LGBTQ conflicts and sentiments would increase because hatred would be systematically encouraged. Removing queer content from our education does not protect your children. There's an underlying message that cannot be denied. It teaches your children that if they are queer in any way, that it's something they should hide, that it's something wrong with them. It pushes sentiments of fear, self-hatred, and brings an onslaught of mental distress in students that no one should go through. I cannot imagine what my life would be like if I was an eighth grader this year and these changes were made. I would not be the confident person I am today. In fact, I would be different entirely. I may not have come out at all. I am proud to say that I have a positive impact on my school community. I smile everywhere I go. I greet my friends and the scene in the hall, and I spread deep love that I have in my heart that I've only been able to achieve through accepting myself with the help of my school. I'm lucky enough to have support that many people don't. There are still so many queer people that walk down the hall with their heads down in fear, even without these changes. Every day I wake up and I hope that through being myself, openly gay and all, I can inspire others to feel that being yourself is worthwhile. I would have never been able to do any of this without the inclusivity of our school community. I don't want LGBTQ people to go through high school without feeling like who they are needs to be hidden, because those children are the ones who needs to be protected and loved in a world that doesn't fully accept them. This is Toby's story, but it's not unique. Toby's story is Toby's story, but it is also our story of everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Noah Berkowitz. I'm from Delaware. Tonight, I'm joined by my fellow students, student activists, who have taken the initiative to defend our Hunterdon County, New Jersey, United States, and worldwide LGBTQ plus and minority voices. The simple thought of removing books that share these voices is a stain upon our society that is eerily reminiscent of similar actions that have taken place throughout history, most notably and comparably Nazi book burnings, which occurred in an effort to silence the beliefs, opinions, and life stories that were deemed as different. The fact is, there's nothing different about it. We go through our daily lives sharing the exact same experiences as those who identify as a member of these demographics. As an educational institution, it is this school's duty to not only include but promote these voices in an effort to secure true equality between all of our students, faculty, and staff. The notion that a removal of books would quote-unquote "solve a problem" is an unbelievably bigoted position that does not promote equality, does not promote inclusion, and does not promote an environment in which we all live hand in hand, continuing to share these life experiences. We, as a school, and you, as a school board, have the ability to reject these ridiculous requests being presented to you. Books have been an outlet for learning, growing, feeling, and discovering for millennia. If there is a removal of these specific books, you will also have removed not only these previously stated necessities, but also the countless outlets in which the stories and voices of some of history's brightest and most important minds have shared their eloquent thought processes. I'd like to end with a quote by Marsha P. Johnson, one of the leading activists in the Stonewall uprising of 1969. Quote, "How many years has it taken people to realize that we are all brothers and sisters and human beings in the human race?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kayla Tankard. I'm from Reddington, and I'm the other co-president along with Riggo of the school's Gender and Sexuality Alliance. So I decided to write a poem. It felt fitting since we're discussing literature, so. Knowledge is power and books our endless supply. We feed on their words, taste their power, feel the strength grow from within our very souls. Like a stream of water, it fills our emptiness, passing through our lips, quenching the desire to know more, to know and to feel and to understand, to hold the power of the world in our young, capable hands. Our books are our power. They show us the world. We escape far away. We become who we want. Feel the knowledge soak in, a delicious new landscape for us to explore, satisfying endless curiosities, questions and answers, and minds eager to soak it all up. Open up to the world which we do not know, mind-shaped to become our better selves, knowing that each lost little girl, each lost little boy, each of us somewhere in between, we belong somewhere in this world. Seeing ourselves in the books we read, a character for everyone. Seeing ourselves in the books we read a character for everyone. To take that away, to take our knowledge, to take our safety and our love and answers, to take our connection to the world, to rob us of what we need, to grow and thrive and learn is an evil beyond description. We are here and we are fighting for what is ours, for that lost little girl and that lost little boy and everyone in between who want, who need these books of power, these sources of strength and learning and belonging. Knowledge is power and books our endless supply. Religion is no excuse, no excuse to take away our rights, our right to know who we are, to read and to learn and to grow. Your actions read as hate, but bigotry and fear are no excuse. You fear what we are, you fear our love and strength, you fear strong children growing into strong adults. Fear is the basis of hatred, a never-ending fire attacking everything in sight. You fear us discovering who we are, who we have always been. And so you take, you take what is ours, you take our knowledge and learning and growth. But we cannot and we will not let you take our books, our rights, our knowledge. Knowledge is power and books our endless supply.
Thank you. Before we move on, before we move on to our next speaker, I just want to speak to the board that we're at 20 minutes and our public session is 30. I'm inclined to extend to 60 minutes tonight since we have a lot of people who still want to speak. Is everybody in agreement with that? We don't need a motion? Okay, thank you.
My name is Jane Boney, I'm from the Reddington District. I don't have something prepared to say tonight, but I want the members of the church group here to know that I'm angry and I will not water down my anger, I will not hide it. For it is not your role to determine who I love, how I love, what I read. Our school is a public school. The content of our library should enrich the lives of students. And the books that we have there have been able to touch all of the students of our school in some way. It's a unique experience being a gay teenager. I pretend to not hear the remarks in the hallways or the jokes when guys call each other faggy. I pretend to not see the barely concealed disgusted looks when I mention my girlfriend. But I'm tired of pretending. Your hatred is evident in what you're doing. The basis that you are moving to prevent these books is your fear and your bigotry. And I do not personally want to attend a school that supports the fear and bigotry of a group of individuals who do not represent the rich and colorful student body of Hunter and Central. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Evan Pollock, I went to Reddington. Got a little thing prepared. First off, I would like to thank the committee helped here today that lets me speak, that lets everyone here speak. Thank you for that. Now I'd like to thank the group of people trying to plan, place this action that would limit the access information to the general public of the school. Thank you for taking part in this, thank you for approaching our school, thank you for approaching this public school, this Hunter and Central Regional High School, a public school, not a private school. That means the parents not have a right to say, that means that this board has a right to say, that means this institution has a right to say what it is. That means that the state has a right, what we learn, not the private. So, a lot of people here today have invoked the word of God, the word of Jesus, the word of the Bible. My compatriots have and those opposed to me have, so why shouldn't I be allowed to? Now, the history of the church and state is interesting, so let's talk about it because the effects have brought us here today, what we're speaking about on this topic. The idea of the church was founded based on the words and teachings of Jesus that I believe we're all accustomed to. He taught that to love another like a brother was a core ten of what he wanted the world to become. After his death, writings of his core beliefs and teachings include the quote, "He who is out sin cast the first stone." I don't believe any of us here today are without sin, so why should we make another one's what we conceive as their sin? Why should we throw a stone to them? These teachings are also written down and combined to what we've commonly known as the First Bible, written Hebrew and translated to multiple languages including Greek and ancient Coptic, a dead language right now. This translation had one major mistranslation, however. According to both theologian Ed Oxford and Andrew Harrison Cox, a Semi student, the teachings from Jesus that states, "No man shall lie with another boy," let me say that again, "no man shall lie with another boy," was translated to the now commonly held belief that "no man shall lie with another man." You can all see how these words have been mixed up. This is now the held belief of many, all because of a mistranslation from 2,000 years ago. This one mistranslation is the reason we're here today debating. Now let's talk about banning books. I ask all of you right here, right now, to imagine one period in human history when a person or a group of people that banned books were remembered fairly by the general public. Please, try and think of one example. There is not one instance. The books that have been banned include some of America's most famous and prestigious books, including The Grapes of Wrath, The Color Purple, and Beloved. I have personally read several formerly banned books due to the amazing English education I have received here, which includes Song of Solomon, Of Mice and Men, 1984, Lord of the Flies, Antichilla Mockingbird, and Catcher in the Rye. If these books had been banned from molding education of today's generation, what have been incomplete to process and complete a society built around who we personally are as individuals? There is something to learn from each of these books, many of which are considered classics, and I'm sure many of you have read them as well and consider them to be worthwhile and vulnerable. The reasoning behind banning books has not changed much since its inception. People can be disgruntled with, let's hurry up, with the content of banning books, disagree with the content side and book feeling goes against. First it started off with violence, then sexuality, and now LGBTQIA+ elements. The book's on trial here today and the ideals proposed in the text are commonplace and should be accessible to an ever-changing demographic of future Americans. A book that includes a man loving another man or a girl realizing that she is gay is only a book. A book that has a message that children growing up today should be not be scared or worried about who they are, they should accept themselves and others for who they are and who they are born to be, not choose to be, born to be. To claim that we need to ban, to claim that we need to ban these books because they're somehow damaging to you-
Evan, I'm gonna need you, please wrap up, I've gotten over your time, thank you.
Folks, I just want to share too that if for any reason you're not able to finish your speech, or for any reason if we end up out of time and unable to allow everyone to speak, that you can always send correspondence to the board, that does have the same impact as speaking at the microphone. The board does read, all members all read all of the correspondence that they receive. So just know that as well.
I am Zoe Wong and I'm from Flemington Borough, I'm an eighth grader at JP Case Middle School. Some might claim that you're being discriminated against for your children having to learn about the world from a different point of view. You're making it so children cannot learn about the LGBTQ plus community and their history in schools. That is discrimination. For these children, coming out can mean life or death. These children can end up homeless, a lot develop depression or anxiety just for loving someone. It's always protect your children until they're gay, until they want to dress like a different gender, until they want to go by a different name. Of all the horrific things in the world and we choose to fear to, people in love, I have seen how coming out can ruin people's lives. This can get so many people killed and in mental hospitals for what? For liking someone. I am Christian, I believe that God created everyone because he loves them. He doesn't just love everybody but gay people. Even if you disagree with the LGBTQ plus community, that doesn't mean you can disrespect them, that is childish. You're ruining the lives of so many people that don't affect you at all. It is none of our business what sexuality a student is, what gender a student is, that we haven't even met. If you want to know what sexuality your child is, then ask them. And if they don't respond truthfully, then that is an issue that you created yourself. Adding children to their parents for them is not your job, especially if you believe that children are too young to know their sexuality. Then don't worry about it until they're older. You cannot say that you care about the LGBTQ plus community if you're going to allow them to be killed, harmed, and abused. These are children, they should be worrying about when they're going to hang out with their friends, not if they can make it through the day unharmed. You treat these people for monsters, like monsters, for daring to love someone. Sorry. You can try, you should, we should be protecting these children from yourselves. You can try and silence the LGBTQ plus community, but you can never get rid of them, just like you and me, they are part of this world and deserve to be heard, they deserve to have rights and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Destiny Docorn and I'm from East Amwell and I'm a senior at Hunter and Central. This year I've begun taking gender studies. Just last Thursday we were talking about how lucky, lucky we were to be sitting in these seats and talking about the important topics that we wear. When we look at the things happening in Texas or Florida, children being forcefully outed by schools or losing their rights, I thought to myself, wow, I'm so fortunate that I have, that I don't have to deal with all the havoc that they're going through, not in my school. And yet here we are, here I am debating whether or not LGBTQ and inclusive books and topics should have a place in our library and in our curriculum. Books are supposed to be a safe space where we can learn who we are through, who we are through other stories. Classrooms are supposed to be a safe, a safe place where we can learn through our history and current events from around the world. The things we are learning through books and curriculums with LGBT, with LGBT themes aren't teaching us to be radically ungodly people or pushing the gay agenda or whatever it is that homophobic, transphobic, and hateful groups seem to think. These books are showing us that we too can be represented and that we matter. They help us grow into the people that we are meant to be. They provide us a lit pathway that is a safe and healthy escape for us to feel wanted in a world full of hate. I never thought that in 2022 we would have to discuss all these things at all. No student or person for all that, for that matter, should feel like their identity is being questioned, especially in an environment where they spend majority of their time. School is about learning, not about wearing if you're able to be yourself. I want to use this time to thank all of my teachers and other staff that have been inclusive and pushing for equality. The smiles in the halls and the little rainbows hidden on some doors or in classrooms mean more than you could ever imagine. You don't know how much it means to your students. Censorship in 2022 is ridiculous. Why be racist, sexist, homophobic, or transphobic when you can just be quiet?
Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Damian Allen Lopez, I'm from SS County, North New Jersey. I'm here representing Garden State Equality over where New Jersey's largest LGBTQ organization in New Jersey. So I'm a project manager, activist, advocate, LGBTQ publisher, author. I want to address the flood of support, the community members, students, parents, teachers, administrators here tonight. I wish I had this type of support when I came out as a child. When I came out, well, as a child, when I, as a child. I came out to my mother and she burned my pride flags in front of my face. She told me I would never be addressed as my name Damian, a name that she refused to speak. I went on to write a children's book, I Am a Prince, not too long ago. First Lady Murphy had the pleasure of reading it to kick off Pride Month last year. I have been, I have a wonderful job fighting for equality in all of New Jersey and am engaged to a man who I love very much. A lot of parents from TikTok who purchased my book for the LGBTQ children told me that their children looked up at them after reading my book and said, "Mom, this is exactly how I feel, I finally see me." The power of representation like this book as well as other inclusive curriculum mandate is imperative to all students who need to be heard, seen, and reminded that they exist and we love them. I wouldn't be here if I didn't see the loving queer couple that lived across the street as, when I was a child. I'm here to offer support for educators, students, and parents who showed up here today. There is a medical consensus from all major medical associations that, and the teacher associations, that affirming student is in fact helpful and is no way disabling of or for the success rates of their counterparts or themselves. I just wanted to quickly read a passage from my book. "At first the king and queen did not understand, the prince had to explain how he felt. The king and queen smiled, and king and queen nodded their heads and smiled. What can we do to help? So they changed his room to his favorite things and colors, no more dresses for thee. The prince smiled as he looked in the mirror, I finally feel like me. At first it was hard, at first it was tough. The king and queen told the prince, we love you for you and you're always enough. Sometimes when babies are born, we think they are what we see, but soon time will tell us the person they are meant to be. There's no reason to be scared, you know your feelings better. We love you so much and we're in this together. The royal family hugged and the prince was filled with glee. They threw a ball in his honor to celebrate the prince and who he was meant to be. Some things take time and that is always okay. The prince and his family wouldn't have it any other way."
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Theo Tsatsos or Theodoreis, whichever you like. I'm a senior here at Central and I'm from the Raritan Township District. I am also a member of the Pulse Club, German Honor Society, and the Overwatch Team. I came here with some remarks, but it seems that many of my fellow wonderful peers have illustrated those remarks in a much better way than I can, so I'd like to establish something else. I'd like to establish what we as a school district are already aware of, what we've known for hundreds of years and what's been the truth since potentially humanity was born. You don't choose if you're gay, you don't choose if you're bi, pan, and non-binary, transgender. It's just how people are. And the unfortunate reality is people seem to think that that changes with environment or with, say, a book that you read about a gay person in a gay world with gay friends doing gay things. It doesn't. It's just not how reality is, it's never, it never will be. And it hurts me to see that people seem to believe that understanding and learning about sexuality, gender, and anything of the topic seems to change the way people perceive themselves and seems to change, I'm sorry, excuse my, it seems to change-
You're doing fine.
Take a moment.
I'm stumbling my words here. I appreciate that. It seemed, we seem to believe that understanding how gender and sexuality work seem to change how we were since we were born. Again, that's not how it works. It's not indoctrination, it's education. And any sort of attack on that is not just an attack on the hundreds of youth in this school who are part of that community, including myself, it's an attack on intellectualism as a whole. And if it continues like this, I will be here to fight against it. Many people here will be here to fight against it, and if needed, I will get a million more to fight against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Arcey from Raritan Township. And I'll make my statements brief and to the point so as to allow others the opportunity to speak as well. As I mentioned, I'm a Raritan Township resident, I have four children, all who are part of this school system, including this school, as well as a business in Hunteren County. This is to say that my family is heavily invested in this school system for the success of our children. This board has taken upon itself to propose a policy which allows students to change their gender from that of which they were born into one by which they believe they identify by. And then not only mandate that faculty acknowledge and compel and comply with this belief by addressing the student with their desired pronoun, but to actually take steps that ensures no notification whatsoever is made to the parents who have not only have a legal responsibility for these minors, but ultimately are left with the already difficult challenge of helping their child navigate all the confusion that life can bring regardless of what you believe. And so sex and gender, listen, I understand there's a lot of emotions here, but sex and gender, while two completely different concepts, all right, gender is tied to biology. And so, so it's a problem in this argument, listen, I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean, okay? The argument in favor of trans rights is a notion that gender and sex are completely separable. They are not, okay? If they, if they were completely separable, then this means identifying people by their subjective gender really has no relevance as to whether they're male or female. Male and female are biological terms. Using terminology like male and female to describe a self-perception of maleness or femaleness is a very bizarre way in my mind of arguing whether someone is a man or a woman. There are objective measures to whether a person is male or female. There are objective measures as to whether a person is a woman or a man. And there certainly is a spectrum in regard to feminist and masculinity, and while this may be a true statement, this does not change the underlying sexual dichotomy that is all the basis of human reproduction. So my, my point though, really about today is that what is probably a shining example of what intolerance looks like, in a move that's supposed to be based on the idea of inclusion, this board aims to take the drastic step to exclude the parents from being notified? I learned a very long time ago that there's no greater deception than self-deception. Please do not deceive yourself into thinking that approving this in its current form is in the best interest of our children and rather than in the best interest with a social-political ideology. If this is supposed to represent a community of inclusion, then include the parents in the discussion rather than demonstrate the hypocrisy you so hate and exclude them. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Sean White, I am a, I'm a local pastor. I've been-
Can you please state your residency for the record?
Oh, sorry, Flemington, Flemington.
Thank you.
I've been in ministry for over 20 years, I've worked with middle schoolers and high schoolers, I'm also a father of four. I'm here today to represent the parents who attend my church and, and who have children in this school. Over the past two years, parents have been sharing with me their concerns for their children as distance learning woke them up to the type of ideology that is currently being taught, not just here, but parents have shared their children's homework assignments with me, I've listened to the complaints of students who are struggling with the school's curriculum and my advice has just simply been to the parents and to the students, just go and share it with those who are in authority, have the responsibility to change it. But over time, it seems like the complaints haven't been considered. And now, and this is the first time I've spoken with you, and I would rather just create a bridge of relationship with all of you here, I, as much- I, I, as much as you guys want what's best for the kids, that's, that's my heart as well, okay? And, you know, I think that where there had been, if you guys represent maybe a quarter of those who represent and are involved in the lives of students, there are still three other quarters. There's obviously the parents, there's, um, professional counselors, and there's, uh, there's, uh, community leaders such as myself. And, um, and many of us are not okay with what's being taught to our children and also just seeing the negative effects that have been, negative effects upon their lives. Recently, I was asked by students from this school to start a support group because they don't trust their guidance counselors to help them navigate through confusing material pertaining mainly to identity confusion students are being indoctrinated with. And this is not to be mean here. There's a difference between love and truth go hand in hand. You can't have one without the other. And it's an assault on our freedoms to teach our children about lifestyles that go against family values, faith, and religious practices. You cannot abandon absolutes, right and wrongs, and then expect our, expect students to thrive. It doesn't work that way. There are divine designs placed upon all of us by God, and whether you choose to accept objective truth doesn't negate the reality of it. We were created male and female, period. When anything exists outside of design, it falls into misuse. Misuse, over time, it leads to abuse. And I now personally know far too many students who equate attending this school as abuse. I recently, I recently examined, I recently examined the matrix for your English one getting to know your identity curriculum during a time where there's so much fear in the world. The curriculum is void of anything wholesome, encouraging, and beautiful.
Please wrap it up, Mr. White.
I'm coming to an end here. I, I would rather just be able to work with you all. You know, I've been discovering that during this time, there are, there's a lot of pain that students are going through. I've asked professional counselors as well, what's just been taking place. Cutting and self-harm is through the roof. Depression, suicide attempts are through the roof right now. And we look at what's being taught, and I know the parents need to be involved in this as well, but what's being taught is fanning into flame something that is bringing more confusion. And this is just coming from care and love. It really is.
Thank you for your comments. We need to move on to get everybody else in.
Thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that everybody is signing in on the sign-in sheet that has spoken or is about to speak. Is the sign-in sheet still floating around? Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Santangelo. I'm from Reddington Township. I stand here tonight asking for your help in putting an end to the sexualization creeping into the school curriculum. All curriculum starts with policy, and I would like to address policy number 5756 regarding transgender students. This policy states that a student can change their gender identity without consent. The school will not notify the parents, and if the parents become aware and disagrees with the child's decision, the city Department of Child Abuse neglects and missing children. Wherever you may fall on this transgender issue, I think we can all agree that parental consent should be required for minors. The school would have us believe that this is the law. This is simply not true. I have in my hands and copies for those interested, the New Jersey statutes. The law states that the school district shall have local control over the content of this policy. The New Jersey Department of Education provided guidelines. Each school's district has the power to either adopt or reject them. Hunterdon Central has chosen to adopt them without parental input, discussion, or consent. The school is also violating its own policy 2110, which states that the board believes that the district must seek input from and work cooperatively with the home, parents, and community. To the parents here tonight, I say most importantly, the school is implying that they know what's best for our children. They want to allow your child to make life-faltering decisions without your consent and likely not even your knowledge. Further, there is a plan in the state to introduce oral and anal sex to the middle school, show videos on how to masturbate to fifth graders, and incorporate the LGBTQ ideology as part of the new learning standards--
Folks, I'm gonna have to ask you to please give respect to the speaker.
We as parents should get to decide and have a God-given obligation to protect our kids. What will happen to our children when we leave such complicated subject matter morals and values up to the educators? In California recently, non-binary male biological school counselors slept in the same cabin for three nights with fifth grade girls during a science camping trip without parental consent. Each parent should be outraged by this. Schools have a duty to provide a safe, supportive learning environment. Sexualizing the curriculum, inserting themselves into the morals and values of our children, and bypassing our rights as parents has no place in the school curriculum or anywhere else for that matter, and demonstrates a clear administrative overreach. I ask you to please change this policy immediately to require parental consent. Thank you for your time.
Those are gonna be some acts to follow. My name is Benjamin Sherwood. I'm from Flemington. I'm a junior here at Hunterdon Central. Uh, in case we weren't aware, this is a high school. Um, I've heard some confusion about that, talking about, uh, some things that don't sound very relevant, but I have something prepared, so I'll save that. Um, I'm a person of deep faith. I attend church three times a week. I pray daily. I'm also pansexual. These are both facts of which I'm completely unashamed. I want to start with this statement. Uh, you can't protect your children from becoming queer. I'm here representing 51 of my fellow students, uh, several of whom are in this room, many of whom cannot attend tonight. I want you to look around you. People who are trying to convince you that your children want to be protected from reality are outnumbered. We are, young as we may be, individuals with rights, and we have a right to an education fit to equip us for the future with an understanding of our past. Because we have inherited a shared past, queer history is history like any other kind. To anyone here who wants to promote an ideology otherwise, I cannot stand with you. Queer people are and always have been a part of your community, no matter how uncomfortable it makes you and no matter how difficult it is for you to understand. To those hiding behind scripture to peddle lies about pedophilia, indoctrination, and the rest, I pity any of you who are capable of kneeling before a god as weak and vitriolic as yours, because that is not the god I pray to. I'll end with this. When you're next asked to thank the children here, I want you to think of the queer children here who were never too young to be taught to be straight or who were never too young to be taught to be cis. I want you to think of your children and their children's children, and think of how in the future they will think of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rae. I use they/them pronouns. I'm a junior here from Reddington Township, and I want to share a little bit of a personal anecdote before I get started. Um, when I walked in here, um, I had a trans flag, this trans flag, in my car, and I didn't bring it in at first because I was scared that I would get, you know, bullied or harassed or get, people would look at me weird. And, you know, I'm out as trans, like I literally just told you my pronouns, but, um, I still fear every day, um, that some kind of violence is gonna come towards me. Um, last year, my sophomore year, I was literally followed around by a freshman at the time for about a week, um, getting called ma'am, um, and gay, um, and I never told anybody this because nobody could prove anything. And I'd already reported this kid, um, well, I hadn't reported this kid, but my friend had reported this kid, and nothing happened, so I just didn't really want to say anything about it. But I ended up having to walk with a friend for a week because I was scared that I would get harassed by this kid. But walking in here and seeing everybody here with the rainbow masks and the signs, I literally sprinted back to my car and grabbed the flag and-- And I thank everybody who came here night. Literally, I did not expect this many people to show up. So I thank you. And I also want to speak on behalf of my friend, um, who is watching the live stream right now. I won't name names. Um, but she was in pit rehearsal rehearsal with me earlier, um, and I asked her if she wanted to come to this, um, because I thought this was really important and I wanted to make sure, um, that, you know, we had a strong showing, um, which I was not disappointed in that aspect. Um, but she was like, no, sorry, not my thing. And I was like, you know, but looking back on it now, I realize that it is not her place to have to deal with this. It is not my place to have to come out here on a night when I should be rehearsing for the school musical, um, and speak and try to literally get my basic rights across, um, to a group of people who say they want to protect the children, but then did not listen to the entire line of students literally standing here on the steps trying to assert their rights. I did not see one student speak on behalf, um, of, you know, removing, um, books from the school curriculum because they're gonna turn people gay or whatever. Books do not turn people gay. They help people who are gay and who are queer and who are trans learn to accept themselves in an environment which is not accepting at all. I look at the news every day. I look at the news every day and I see news about trans kids in Texas being persecuted because of their gender identity and their parents being persecuted because they just tried to provide basic gender-affirming healthcare to their child. And I am scared to death that, I'm thankful that I live in New Jersey, but I am scared to death that that stuff is gonna happen to me and it's gonna happen to my friends. And it is horrible that we should have to fight for our rights like this. Trans rights are human rights. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Lisa Munoz Flemington. I come before you in the love. A mandate for LGBT curriculum and inclusion law requirements has been presented to be implemented in the schools. The content of this curriculum, a set of attitudes, beliefs, and practices, is doctrine from a religious belief system, and currently there is a push to make it a dogma of the public school system. Many families are opposed to having this information introduced into the minds of our children. It is not our faith nor our religion. We reject any and all curriculum that will attempt to expose our children to these ungodly attitudes, beliefs, and practices. As for this spirit on the wall, and those who you, who have ears to hear, let you hear. I know your deeds, that you are neither cold nor hot. I wish that you were cold or hot. So because you are lukewarm and neither hot nor cold, I will spit you out of my mouth. Revelations 3. So be forewarned. Choose for yourselves this day who you will serve, but as for me and my house, we will serve the Lord, and I implore you to do that as well. Thank you.
I think that might be the end of our audience. Um, at least let it, it's up to you. I mean--
Hi, um, my name's Dylan Martin.
Hold on one second.
I think folks could, you know, get through the line. I mean, if you want to say at this point--
Yeah, that's fine. So we're approaching--
How far out the door is the line going, Mr. Thornton? Say that again?
Okay.
All right. Do you want to, we can cut the line off there.
Yeah, so, uh, if the board is in agreement, we'd like to cut the line where it is at the end. Uh, we'll finish up with the folks who are in line and the two out the door, and then we'll wrap up public comment. Is everybody okay with that? Just so that everybody's up and standing and who's been patient enough to wait in line can be heard. Is everybody in agreement on that? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
Hi, my name is Dylan Martin. I'm a social studies teacher here at Hunterdon Central. Uh, I'd like to first, uh, start by, uh, recognizing and applauding all of the young people who spoke tonight. These are impressive and resilient young people, and I'm sure there were many moments tonight that were quite difficult for them. I've been with the district eight years as a teacher and a coach, and I, I first want to begin by thanking the board and Dr. Moore for implementing the state curriculum standards at our school that highlight the disabled and LGBTQ plus communities' contributions to our nation's history. As a teacher, it is my job to listen to our students and respond to, by working, to create the safest, most welcoming, and most inclusive environment for all students. The new curriculum standards have allowed teachers to highlight actors in our nation's history who have been marginalized and largely ignored. The new curriculum standards help assure that our history is not told by only those with power, but by a diversity of voices and perspectives. We are not silencing voices. We are rather adding voices to the conversation. Attacks on our LGBTQ plus and disabled communities are nothing new in this nation's history, and we refuse to devolve to those darker times of our past. As a result of these state initiatives, our disabled students and our LGBTQ plus students are able to see the influence of their communities on our society and are better equipped to further envision the opportunities for them. This state-mandated curriculum ensures we do not perpetuate the exclusion of these populations from the fabric of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
I'm the Reverend Vernon Williams. And in my context, we have a saying, if you dig one ditch, you better dig two. Christ also said that before you can pull the small splinter out of your own eye, you mu- before, out of your brother or sister's eye, you must pull the plank out of yours. We've heard a lot of rhetoric out here tonight about the humanity of LGBTQ plus that is not in keeping with the God I know. It is in total rejection to what Christ has taught. Love. Christ taught that we are to love our neighbor as ourselves. What you've heard is hatred. What you've heard is bigotry. So tonight, I want to commend you, Dr. Moore, and the board for your steadfast focus on creating an environment for quality and equitable learning that is welcoming and safe for each and every student here at Central. Please note that as you see tonight, there are many parents who are appreciative of what you are doing in bringing equity, inclusion, and diversity here and making it a welcome and valuing place for every, each and every student, for white students alike. We, and, and, and I'll just cut it short. I want to encourage you with this from Dr. Martin Luther King. He said, as he wrote to the clergy from, from his Birmingham jail cell, "I have been so greatly disappointed with the white church and its leadership. But even if the church does not come to the aid of justice, I have no despair about the future. I have no fear about the outcome of our struggle." For him, it was in Birmingham. For you, Dr. Moore and the board, it's right here, right now. Even if our motives are at present misunderstood, and the policies that you have been implementing that affect many of our young people are being misunderstood, and I dare say-- Because the goal of America is freedom. If the inexpressible cruelties of slavery could not stop us, the opposition we face now and tonight will surely fail. We will win our freedom because our, the sacred heritage of our nation and the eternal will of God are embodied in our echoing demands. So, Dr. Moore, Hunterdon Central Board of Education, stay vigilant. You are on the side of what is right and moral, and know that you have many parents and you see a large community standing behind you.
Thank you, Reverend.
My name is Edward Brandt, uh, principal here at Hunterdon Central. I want to say thank you to the board for highlighting and supporting our Students of the Month and Staff All-Stars each month. While the individuals noted each month are deserving of the praise, uh, realize that they are also just a representative of the many students and staff members who have shown an amazing-- an amazing resiliency, positivity, perseverance through some very trying times. Your support and acknowledgement of them is noticed and appreciated. And I want to thank you too for supporting me. I've never thanked the board back in 1997 when I was hired here, so let me thank you now. When I started here as a teacher and a coach and advisor of the Student Council, I was welcomed by so many, so many kind students, parents, and fellow staff members. They made me feel like I belonged, even though I did not live here. And I point that out because I have the awesome, awesome opportunity as principal of Hunter and Central, this great school, to pay it forward to all of our students, all 2,685 of them, and also the students who are coming next year. Looking forward to meeting you. I welcome them. We welcome them every day, all of them, whether they, whether or not they look like me, eat like me, pray like me, like the same music as me, or love like me. Each one is welcome. Each one belongs. Because this is their school. This is your school. Keeping it short again, thank you for giving me that opportunity to pay it forward to them each and every day and the opportunity to welcome our students every morning. I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eva Guascioni. I live in Annandale, New Jersey. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for New Hope Celebrates, a nonprofit LGBTQ plus organization. Our mission is to promote our communities as culturally diverse destinations, not just for the LGBTQ plus community, but for all who believe in equality. My role on the board is as co-chair of the NHCIDEA, Inclusion, Diversity, Equality, Accessibility, and Anti-Racism. It is my goal to be an advocate for anyone who feels unseen, unheard, based on race, identity, background, age, or beliefs. Without taking up too much time, I'd like to start at the very beginning. I've heard it's a very good place to start. I grew up in a very, very faith-based family. My parents both taught CCD for grades K through 12. My house was the house where kids would spend hours after school learning about God and eating Rice Krispie Treats. Family summers were spent in Italy at a countryside convent where my great uncle was the priest. We stayed in the residences and were cared for by the nuns. You can imagine what this experience was like for a kid who was obsessed with the movie The Sound of Music. My sisters and I would play in the gardens and run through hallways. In the evenings, we would go to mass, and guess what? The nuns would sing. Angelic, harmonious, amazing music. Although I may have been four, five, or six years old, I knew I was experiencing God. I wanted to share these experiences to show where I come from. You see, I had all these experiences when I was still a boy. My parents raised me with love, acceptance, kindness, and God. I always knew I was a girl. I have dressed and lived as female from the time I was 12 years old. Throughout my high school years, I can't say there was much in the way of resources or LGBT education. I wish there was. My parents turned to LGBT-related books and encouraged me to read them. I also had musical theater to help find my identity. However, not everyone is as lucky. Believe it or not, musical theater is not everyone's cup of tea. I know. We need to provide the tools to help young individuals safely and openly identify themselves. I would go on to transition right out of high school. My parents gave their full support. At 22, I had full gender reassignment surgery at Lower Bucks Hospital with my family by my side. The recovery was long, intense, and painful. I turned to God and music yet again. Now here I am, the first transgender woman ever to be elected to the Board of Directors of New Hope Celebrates. I'm here today to speak for our youth, speak with our youth, who have the right to see their culture in literature, our youth who deserve the experience of discovering alongside peers and educators, especially if they are unable to do so at home. I'm sorry, I will cut to the chase. I'm sorry. We have all learned about oppression, bigotry, hate. We know how important it is to learn about the Holocaust, black oppression, religious differences, and even if this is not our ancestry, not our story, not our experience, not our journey, we must be willing to learn about all of humanity. To be a Christian is to love all your brothers and sisters. Remember that knowledge is power. Do not let fear take away the power, that power for anyone else. Let's encourage our youth to make their own decisions while leading with kindness. Together, we can make sure that everyone has the chance to hear their own sound of music. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Francesca Tyrone. I'm a, love you two. That's my girlfriend. Hi, my name is Francesca Tyrone. I'm from Flemington, and I am a senior at this school. A lot of people here today have been very polite and very eloquent. I can't exactly say the same about myself. There, I'm just going to get straight to this. There's been a lot of rumors that there's going to be some ban on LGBT books from our school, which unfortunately seems to be true. And though I only heard about this very recently, I wanted to talk on this because I feel like I'm a kind of person who has a voice, and this is, this gives me the ability to say something for those who either can't right now or don't have the ability or are not confident enough to speak on this matter. The idea that book, these books are dangerous is a falsehood perpetuated by the idea that there was some gay agenda being pushed by the LGBTQ community. Those who only wish for representation and reassurance are somehow forcing others to become gay by just reading a book? That's really not possible. However, I feel like the agenda that is being pushed today is the straight agenda. The idea that because we're not supposed to be able to show gay people, we can only show straight people, and if anything, by reading a book about a straight person, it's doing the same exact thing as reading a book about a gay person. It's no different than it. It's love. Love is love, and all of it is just love. And there's no difference between reading either books. They're the same, they're equal, and they're not going to change anybody's mind. Many students who are uncertain and scared and need somebody to relate to or need, go to these pieces of media to find solace and a community and find somebody there so they don't feel so scared. I'm going to be honest, I was suicidal at a time, at some, a point in my life, because I didn't know how to say that I was gay. And it took a big part of my life just to realize that it's okay to be how I am and that I'm totally fine with who I am, and that I'm confident, and I get to wear what I want, and I get to do what I want, and I get to be with who I want because it doesn't matter. And my girlfriend was so supportive through all that, and I really love her. And I don't want this to be a chance for other, this, taking away these books, is giving other kids the chance to go through what I did, and I don't want that for anybody. I don't want anybody to feel pain that I did, sitting in my room, staring at a knife, not knowing if I can be confident enough myself that I can go another day, that I can go another day living, knowing that I can be called terrible person, and I have to constantly hide who I am. So you know what? I am proud to be pan. I am pansexual, and that's okay. And I am gender fluid, and that's okay, because I don't have to be anything else.
Thank you, Francesca.
Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me to address you. My name is Andy Simmons. I am from Lambeauville, New Jersey, and I am a 2018 graduate of Hunter and Central. As a queer person with mental health issues, I have faced a lot of struggle and harassment and bullying. A 2019 CDC study concluded that LGBT youth were two times more likely to have been bullied on school property and three to four more times more likely to have attempted suicide than cisgender youth. If it were not for the support that Hunter and Central administration and staff gave me, I probably wouldn't be here by, right now, speaking in front of you. I was one of the lucky ones. I had support from both, from both of my parents. Many students are not so fortunate. I hear, I keep hearing a common theme of, like, get the parents involved, get the parents involved. Sometimes that's not an option. Some, so for many students who are not so fortunate, school is where they can be themselves and feel safe. A health curriculum that includes topics relevant to LGBT students and a staff that models respect for chosen pronouns are two of, are just two of the things that can help minimize bullying. These are things that, things, these are things both support, these things both support the LGBT students and educate the entire student body. So I beg of you, please do not change anything. Instead, keep moving forward with mental health and LGBT education support and support so we do not have any incidents due to lack of education. All children deserve to have, to have a safe place to learn and grow. I'd like to say how grateful I was for the support and acceptance that I received from the staff at Hunter and Central. Today I give you my support. Thank you. And just to end off, we are here, we are queer, and we're not going anywhere.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kate Flemington, and I am a 2020 graduate of Hunter and Central. Sorry, finding where I got to start. I wanted to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to speak today, and what it is that I wanted to speak about is the importance of inclusion of diverse and LGBTQIA+ friendly material in the curriculum. I am a Christian woman. I am bisexual. I grew up Catholic, and I'm so thankful to my parents for guiding me in the path that I have gone down. It has given me a great deal of comfort to rely on God for things that I can't explain. However, I am not thankful for the lack of knowledge and information I had about the queer community that can be tied back to my upbringing. People wishing to remove material pertaining to the queer community in schools don't understand the damage this could have on teenagers at this school. Researchers report in JAMA Pediatrics that sexual minority youth were more than three times as likely to attempt suicide as their heterosexual peers, and transgender youth nearly six times as likely to attempt suicide as heterosexual peers. Removing access of learning about the LGBTQIA+ community in a fluid way in the curriculum could only prove to increase these rates. Those who don't identify as a cisgender heterosexual are at a higher risk to experience bullying and self-threatening behaviors. Being transgender, being gay, being lesbian, bisexual, queer, it's not a choice. We all know that. And by sheltering youth from information about sexual preference or gender identity, this could inspire hateful behaviors or actions between peers, simply because those students weren't educated and weren't aware of how their words or actions would impact members of the queer community. The inclusion of diverse and LGBTQIA+ friendly material in the curriculum is a step in the right direction to creating a healthy and safe, effective learning environment for the teens attending Hunter and Central. So I hope I have inspired the Board of Education to continue taking those steps forward and not to take any steps back. Thank you.
My name is Eric Cohen. I am the rabbi of the Flemington Jewish Community Center. Most of our high school students attend Central, and tonight first, I want to thank the board. You have among the toughest jobs that there are, and I want you to know I appreciate that, especially in these times of deep polarization. I am thankful that you created an Equity, Racism, and Diversity Committee. Thank you. But I'm also here to encourage you to do even more. Rather than consider removing items, we need a lot more LGBTQA materials in our schools. From Texas to Florida, our LGBTQ plus children are under assault. Governors and state legislatures are causing untold anguish for families and for children. These are truly anti-family values, and we have to take a stand. As a leader in my faith tradition, I regularly preach respect and appreciation for the differences and diversities of our community. I depend on teachers. I depend on educators to help me shed light on the diversity that is our community. I depend on them to teach a history with honesty and with integrity. It's really, really important. Learning these things is not easy, I grant, and there are difficult conversations ahead, I realize. But I ask this board not only to persevere, but to double its efforts. Here in our community, we have to draw a line. Up to this point and no further can forces of intolerance push us. I urge the board and the committee, please double down on your efforts. I just, I want to, I just want to acknowledge the other faith leaders in this room, and I want to let the board know, we have your back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Truly not fair to follow that, so I'm going to be really brief, because what I want to say is what he said. Rob McElian, she, her, hers, and I'm from Reddingson Township. I'm going to just highlight the irony that this is Read Across America Week, and we're discussing banning books. The former English teacher in me is very sad that we're discussing banning books because our theme this year is a nation of diverse readers. And again, the irony is not lost on me that that is this year's theme as well. Our students need to be able to see themselves in the books that they take out of our libraries. I thank Hunter and Central for trying to make this an inclusive environment for every student that comes here. Our students are not all entirely safe when they go home. Sometimes the only reflection of themselves they get are the books that they take out of our libraries. It's the only place they can seek the knowledge that they're looking for. So, again, ditto. I encourage you to, to keep exploring these diverse topics and making sure that our students all feel that they are reflected when they come to our buildings. It's very important, and it's hard work, and I appreciate it.
First, I just want to say I'm absolutely terrified to be up here right now. And I also want to say that any restriction of knowledge or history in this school district is just an evil that cannot be allowed. But I wanted to talk about why I was actually here. I've been planning about, for this for about two months. I wanted to talk about AP European history. So yeah, crazy enough, I'm not here for any of this. But I applaud my fellow students who are here. Good job, guys.
Could you please state your name for the record and what town you're from?
Nate Wright. I'm from Flemington.
And your name, please?
Nate Wright.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm a Boy Scout. I am in Youth in Government, Mala UN, Speech and Debate. I am active in a lot of civic duty. I have a lot of, I do a lot of volunteer work at the food pantry and other, like, environmental cleanups. And I, I love history. I had I have been interested in history for years, and the school has been a big part of that with classes like AP European History and AP, APUSH. And I, I wanted to thank you guys for creating those classes. What I wanted to talk about today was the decision to make AP European History an elective instead of allowing it to count as a world history credit. This decision, I believe, restricts students' ability to choose what they want to learn about in the school environment. And some people believe that just focusing on one regional location of the world doesn't talk about the entire world, and it shouldn't count as world history. As recent events have shown in Ukraine that European history is as much a part of global history as anywhere else in the world. And I wanted to ask the Board to reconsider turning AP European History into an elective and to instead create other classes, such as those that focus on Latin America, Africa, and Asia or Oceania, to talk about other types of history instead of restricting students' access to different types of classes. I, I'm really out of my depth right now. I really wasn't expecting this. But yeah, I, I hope you reconsider your decision. And if you can, that, that'd make this school a much better place to learn, a much more fun place to learn, and you'll be ensuring that the sophomores, juniors, and seniors who are going to be, sophomores or juniors who are going to be taking the class next year get guaranteed those credits and can satisfy their graduation requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Bone. I moved my young, very young family to Raritan Township more than 30 years ago. As you might guess, my daughter, eldest daughter, was six years old, about to go to elementary school, and the reputation of the schools in this area was a driving factor in moving here. My daughter was the first class to go to DeMar Elementary School when it was brand new as a first grader. My son went to JP Case in one of the first classes. And my children thrived in these schools. What makes a great school? It's a combination of money for teachers, technology, and culture. And for each of my children, the ability of the schools to look at their individual, unique characteristics and address them with respect was part of what made their success. It was the culture embedded within the school system. Now, each of my three children is a proud graduate of Hundred and Central Regional High School, two marching Red Devils. Just to call out one musical theater type. And they've all gone on and graduated from college. And I attribute their thriving in part to the unique, respectful, one-on-one addressing of their needs. I read the transgender policy, and as an aside, I'm an out-gay man now myself. And what I took from it as the most important is that for Hundred and to continue a tradition of great schools, you need to continue a culture that looks at the individual needs of each student and treats that student with respect. The policy that you've adopted does that, and I commend the Board on looking at that policy. And I encourage you to keep going, because great schools make for great real estate values, for those of you who are into that. As those of us who no longer have children in the schools might note. And great schools are important for children. So I commend the Board in addressing the unique needs of each child. And I encourage you to, as one of our former speakers said, double down.
So my name is Wayne Fish. I've been coming to these board meetings. Maybe some people have seen me for the past couple of months. And wow, I didn't plan for all this tonight. I had no clue kind of all this was going on. So in regards to this, all I want to say is that, man, I just want to say that I don't care personally if you're black, brown, yellow, gray, blue, gray, whatever, girl, boy. We are all humans, and we should all be treated as so, with love. And there is no room for hatred as we see that day in and day out today. So I just want to say, say that. As for Mrs. Hughes, I want to thank you also for realizing that people need to be heard. And extending time tonight, man, it sounds like some of our things that we've been talking about is starting to happen and come through. So I want to thank you for doing what you did tonight for these people and this audience that we have here. Now, on another note, I, it's, again, I'm small in the grand scheme of things here. I do want to come back to some old business that we still don't have any responses on. So you guys have an uphill battle here, and you guys got to just keep coming out if there's something you believe in. So first off, I know it seems like we're out of the light on this whole COVID thing, but you know, you say that you follow the local DOH. We still don't have answers as to how it is that other people that are in our same area go by a different set of rules. So we still don't have answers to, at least I haven't heard them. Stop right there. See, I didn't, I didn't go anywhere.
Mr. Fish, please address the Board. We've been doing so well tonight.
We have, we have. See, vaxxed, unvaxxed, if we really want to go there, no hatred one way or the other.
Mr. Fish, please.
So anyways. Also, I brought to the Board of Ed's attention that Dr. Moore's plan for educating our kids when they can't be in at school has not worked and is not working. So where is the Board's point? Where's your guys' response to what we've been talking about for the past several months as far as getting our kids educated and allowing them to log into their class when they're at home so that they can actually learn like all their other colleagues? It is not hard in this day and age to have the camera live in the classroom where a teacher can just go in live at Google Meets or however they do it, Zoom, and get these kids educated. And lastly, there's a new problem that was brought to my attention, Mr. Moore. So the last thing is kids reporting seconds late to class or reporting late to class. It's been brought to my attention that kids have to go out of the classroom and go get a late pass. And what this does is it buys them an extra half hour of not getting taught. That, that policy is so absurd, it's not even funny. A teacher should be able to report and just document that the kid is late to class. What kids are doing is they're going to get the pass and hanging out in the bathroom for a half an hour and then getting to class. Our job here is to educate our kids. This policy is absurd. Man, let the teacher just document the person's late and let the kid get in class and learn. That's what we're here to do, is teach our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
Appreciate all that.
Folks, we thank you for your patience. We've got about eight or 10 more speakers, so please give them the respect that the earlier folks had.
Hi, my name is Kelly Ospina. I'm from Raritan Township. I'm here representing my church, Grace United Church of Christ. We are an open and firm church in Flemington. I'm also here representing myself as a class of 86 at this school. The first thing I'd just like to say is on the book banning subject, literacy and book banning don't go well together. And representation matters, so taking books out of the libraries, it helps no one. And LGBTQ+ kids need that representation. That library is a safe place. You know, as a kid who was bullied, that library means everything, it's their lifeline. And then as a, as a graduate of this school, I want to say, when I came to this auditorium for freshman orientation in 1982, I could not imagine what I'm seeing here today. Although, it's amazing, it's so different. Sorry, I'm not a good speaker, you can tell. In my day, if, if kids were gay, they had to just keep it to themselves and keep their head down and try to survive the next four years. That was it. There was nothing else. So I see so much progress in this room, but my God, there's still so much to do. The books are in that library because of progress. Don't erase the progress the people that came before us made getting those books into the library. They need to stay there. And to all the kids that came out tonight, and you shared your truth, and you shared your story, or you're supporting a friend, I'm here for you. I'm here to be an ally to you. So I'm so proud of you. Love is love is love, and any individual or religious body that tries to tell you otherwise, they're doing it wrong, okay? Just don't listen to that. You do you, okay? That's all I came to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jason Cohen, Flemington. First, I, I'm a Jew. You've probably heard my Rabbi talking about, you know, stuff like that. But I wanted to just, he's, to reiterate that banning these books aren't, aren't good. Like, why would we consider this as an idea when we're trying to give children the right to learn? And in general, LGBTQ students, why would we not give them the ability to find out what they are? They're not turning kids gay like the Bible isn't turning kids straight. So, you know, it's, it's, it's insane to really think about. I, throughout middle school, I was depressed because I didn't know who I was. I had, I had voices in my head because I couldn't talk to people about my, my sexuality. And banning these books was not going to help that. I don't want anyone to experience what I went through. I've been in the hospital multiple times because of that. So I just, to reiterate, we don't need, we don't, we should not be banning these books. They're helpful, not harmful. For anyone who thinks they're turning them gay, maybe show them the Bible, they'll turn them by. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Herb Reider, I'm from Reddington Township. I've heard some people asking the Court to include parents in the discussion. Well, I'm a parent of two children in this school, and I'm being included in this discussion. I'm here to say that inclusion, lesson, removing inclusion lesson plans, removing library books is unconstitutional, un-American, and is in violation of policies of this district. In 1982, in Board of Education versus PICO, the Supreme Court held that removing books from libraries, school libraries, based on content was violation of the First Amendment. In doing so, the Court said, "Justice access to ideas makes it possible for citizens generally to exercise their rights to free speech and press in a meaningful manner. Such access prepares students for active and effective participation in the pluralistic, often contentious society in which they will soon be adult members." 457 U.S. 853, page 868. In doing so, the Court also quoted James Madison, the primary architect of the Constitution, who wrote, "A popular government without popular information or the means of acquiring it is but a prologue to a farce or a tragedy, or perhaps both. Knowledge will forever govern ignorance, and a people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives." This also is reflected in the policies of this district. The mission, Hundred and Central, is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. Philosophy, free public education for all children is a cornerstone of democratic society that values the worth and dignity of each individual. It goes down into the details, educational goals. "All pupils shall learn to use their minds well so they may be prepared for responsible citizenship, for their learning, and productive employment in our modern society." This school is a microcosm of our American society, and part of that society is a group of people who don't identify as a heterosexual male or woman, and those who support them, as we can see. And no amount of wishing or podium thumping by certain groups is going to make them go away. I recommend that the district, if, this Board, if they haven't yet, read Board of Education versus PICO and consider that the education of the student body of the school has to affect, reflect the world as it is, not how some groups want it to be. In the meantime, I'm going to find some of those books that these groups don't want my children to see. I'm going to read them, I'm going to discuss them with my children. I am going to have them make their own informed decisions as part of their education as citizens of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reider.
Good evening, my name's Kelly Ruste, I'm from Raritan Township. I haven't been inside this school for six years. I have three children that graduated from Hundred and Central, and my youngest graduated six years ago. I'd like to congratulate the Board and the administrators and the teachers of Hundred and Central. From what I've seen tonight, you've done an amazing job with your LGBTQ+ curriculum. It's amazing. What I would have done with something like that years ago, I not only am a resident of Raritan Township, so I'm a resident of this school district, I am also a parent of an LGBTQ+ child. My youngest is transgender. So I am a parent, and our family's going on a journey. We're, we're on this journey together. And it's, I just can't impress upon you enough that it is a journey. It's not a phase, it's not a fad. You're born a certain way, and no amount of anything, praying, whatever, is going to change that. But one thing is really important is that you increase your knowledge. And as a parent, I have had to, I'm a teacher by trade, but I've had to teach myself a whole new language. Because there is, for a cis person, there is a whole new language. You have to teach yourself. So when I heard that there may be some banning of some books, I, I was just shocked. Because it's really important to have tools and things available for our kids and also for yourself. So I challenge any parent, any student, any Board member, before you make any brash, brash decisions, educate yourself. Pick up one of those books, read it for yourself, and then make a decision. Because you may be hearing something, and it may not be factual. You know, you're, I, I've heard a lot of different things tonight. A lot of things are amazing and positive, and the energy in here was amazing. You should be very proud of all the students here. I am very proud to say that I live in Raritan Township.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Gong. I'm a Raritan Township resident. My daughters are in college right now, and they're exploring their identities. I'm a taxpayer, so I came to this meeting tonight. I received an email and wanted to find out what the issues are. And my goodness, these students are brave and eloquent. I want to tell you a quick story. Yesterday, I was at a bookstore, and I knew I was coming to this meeting. And I said, well, you know what? I'm a spiritual person, but I'm not a religious person. So I'm going to go over to the religious section and find out about Christianity. So the store employee pointed me in the right direction, and I looked at a few books. There was one about the Bible, so I picked it up, it was interesting. I found words like justice, love, and forgiveness. Then that same store employee came over and asked if I needed any other help. At first I said no, then I said yes. Please show me this section on books about LGBTQ issues. He laughed, I wasn't sure why he laughed. He laughed, I wasn't sure why he laughed, but he said, "The books are right next to you." How about that? On my left were the books about Christianity, and on the right were the books about LGBTQ issues. And the books were getting along really well. So I took a look at some of the LGBTQ books, even though we've got them at home, and I found the same words, "love," "justice," "forgiveness," and also "understanding," and "anti-bullying," and "safe haven." And then there were also books with pictures of people that we know about. Elton John, David Bowie, George Michael, Jodie Foster, Ellen DeGeneres, Neil Patrick Harris, Zachary Quinto, Jim Parsons. Can you imagine what the world would be without these people? You know, not to digress too much, and Nate, thank you for bringing up history, but, um, I'm sorry, I should be addressing you. Um, I have a question for the audience, and they don't really have to raise their hand, they can just answer in their head. Who here thinks that the war between Russia and Ukraine is not good? I bet a lot of folks think that. But what I also learned recently is that in Russia, being gay or lesbian is a crime. There's a law signed by Putin in 2013. He signed a law upholding so-called "traditional family values." The law has had a stifling effect on access to affirming education and support services with harmful consequences to LGBTQ youth. Just think about what those courageous Ukrainians are fighting for today. Democracy, freedom. I have a friend, Michelle Van Seles, she's a business owner here in Flemington. She married a man who transitioned. So here's her very personal view. It's not just a school issue, it's a family issue. These are important issues that impact family relationships. People suffer when they can't express themselves freely. So board members, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Quinn Mazzio. I, uh, live in Flemington. I'm a sophomore here at, uh, Hunter and Central, and I'm terrified to do this. Um, I was not planning on making a speech today. I did not intend to write anything about it, solely because of how stigmatized talking about being yourself, being transgender, being gay, anything like that, how stigmatized that is, and how scary it is to have to talk about it. Some people here have mentioned that teaching LGBT content in school is indoctrination, or it's corrupting kids. It's not indoctrination to say a young boy at the age of five is a heartbreaker, or a ladies' man when he high-fives a girl on the playground. It's not indoctrination for my dentist, when I was six, to ask, "So do you have a girlfriend yet?" At every single time I went there. It's not a problem when you're straight as a child, but if you are anything other than that, it is an issue. Why is that? What is the problem with being anything other than the norm? Why is it such a big deal to be different? God has said that, well, first let me state, I'm not a very religious person. I haven't gone to church in a while since COVID started, but I grew up Christian. Um, I was raised that way, and I know many things have been misconstrued in that religion. Um, God said to love your neighbor, as many other people have said, and I don't understand why that doesn't apply to anyone who's trans, or anyone who's gay. And I feel as though people are corrupting their religion to hate on others unjustly.
Good evening. Stefania Alakwitz, Hillsboro, New Jersey. I am not a resident of your community, but I have deep, deep ties to your community. My very best friend, since we were 12 years old, woman who saved my life as a 12-year-old boy, introduced me to members of your community. One of my very, very, very best friends, I was a groomsman in his wedding, and he was a groomsman in my wedding, is a graduate of your school, 1998. So while some may see me as an interloper, I hope you understand that I'm here because there are people in your town and in your community that I love, that I call family, and some of them are in this room right now. I am part of the 1%. I am part of the 1% of women who were born with a penis, instead of a vulva. That's a quote from my math professor friend, Sam. Um, her other really, really good quote is, and remember, she's a math professor, so she's smart. Um, I'm an engineer, and she's smarter than me because she's a math professor, clearly. "It takes a group of 69 people for there to be two trans people together." 69 people. I know, it's funny, right? How many kids are on a football team? I guarantee you, every single one of your football teams has had a trans girl on it. Every single one, through history of this school's creation, has had a trans girl who chose to play the game that she loved, and probably never tell anyone for the rest of her life who she is. Because football's for boys. I'm an educator, but I'm a failed educator. I'm one of the ones that couldn't hack it. You see, I'm like the kids, not the business. They have this weird rule, and you guys know it because you make it, teachers have to be at school before the kids. I was not particularly good at that, because I have ADHD, I have sleep apnea, and I have gender dysphoria. And when I was 33 years old, all of those came together in a perfect storm, so that I did not receive tenure as the band director at Ridge High School in 2009. Some of you probably saw my marching band that year. We wore blue uniforms and did a James Bond show, maybe you remember it. That's my creative work, I'm very proud of it. It's the last time I ever got to teach kids. I'm now an engineer, I make great money, I have two degrees, and I'm finally at 43, who I have known with certainty, I have, am, since 1985 and seven years old. But in 1985, I learned from Tom Hanks that the way that you be a woman is you stick some towels in your shirt and you walk around with fake boobs. And it took me telling my wife of 10 years that I've known since 1997, that this was something I have always done in my life, and the fear that she would not understand I've been at this a year. I'm going to leave you with a quote. I am not religious either, by the way. Um, so Rabbi, hopefully you can correct me on this pronunciation. This is from Rabbi Avika Weisinger. Um, some of you may have seen this tweet. "For those wondering why I, an Orthodox rabbi, am outraged by the Texas trans law, aren't I supposed to stand up for Torah values, or whatever? End of thread." Now, I was raised Catholic, so any Jews in the room, please let me know if this is accurate. "I don't like it when kids kill themselves. End of thread."
And with that, we will close public session. Um, before we move on to board comments, I just want to say a few things. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Brandt, Mr. Thornton, Reddington Township Police Department, and Hunter and Central Security for keeping the crowd organized for us tonight. Lot of people here tonight. Um, I want to thank the speakers for following the rules, being respectful, uh, and most importantly, wow, I am blown away by the students here tonight.
Hold on, everybody, hold on.
Your, your courage and bravery, uh, is amazing. So thank you all for coming out. Uh, we're now going to move on to board comments. Dr. Moore, or anyone who would like to add anything before we close out.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and if folks just give me a minute to, to share. I want to clarify one or two things.
Yeah, guys, you may want to stay and listen to some of the comments.
Um, first off, uh, y'all want to echo everything I've heard, and also I just want to share that I'm really weary. Um, and I'm weary not just over the past two years, and over the, the challenges of the past five years, and there've been many challenges, but I'm just weary of hearing and spending so much time on what people are against. And I think it's important to share a little bit about what we're for, and what I'm for, and, and what that means for us. And, and I want to address something specific about this concern about book banning as well, because I want to make sure you understand how that, uh, how that concern could, you know, actually plays out in a district like ours. Um, there is no pending, uh, motion to ban any books. Um, we do certainly have concerns about people who are, are worried about some of the access that folks have to books in our media center, but I'll, I'll speak to that process in a little bit. We're trying to build something here at Central. We're trying to build something that's based on the belonging of everybody here. And that is, uh, true of each of our students and what they deserve here in terms of belonging, whether we're talking about racial, or ethnic, or sexual, or gender identity. Everybody deserves to belong here, and that's something that we're committed to. The, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm awestruck by what we heard tonight from our kids who, who live and breathe that ethic so well, uh, and, and take care of each other so well. The thing that I am sort of most concerned about is that if, if we're going to make progress toward this world that I'm talking about, in which there's belonging for everybody, and we're going to, to, to achieve that here at Central, it requires us to not only see the differences between us, but to regard them as the wonderful things that make each of us who we are. The differences that you bring to the table as people in this school are strengths. And you deserve, and everyone here deserves, for that to be seen, for those to be seen as strengths. That's what hope, and joy, and faith, and covenant mean to me. That's the law written on my heart, if we want to get into any sort of biblical metaphor here. That's the law written on my heart. It's that the gender, racial, ethnic, sexual identity, the differences that you bring to the table are the strengths that you bring to the common thing that we're trying to build here, in terms of a world in which everybody belongs. Schools have to do this work. This is work that schools are built to do. We cast our work into the future. That's why I often talk about our work as being optimistic, even in the face of some really difficult things. All right? Let me talk a little bit about the book concern, and I want to allay your concerns to a certain degree as well. Because I know there's a lot of concern about books. We have a policy and regulation, it's policy 9130, regulation 9130. It governs how we handle complaints about books and lessons and all sorts of things. But I want to make it clear to you about books. If someone has a concern about a book in our media center, they have to write me a letter. They have to write me a letter, and they have to lay out their concern very specifically. They also have to prove to us that they're familiar with the whole work, not just certain portions of it. They have to write me a letter, and then I have the job of convening a committee. And that committee, our regulation tells us exactly who has to be on that committee. I have to convene a committee that then studies the work, and studies the complaint, makes a recommendation to this board. And then the board can take action based on that recommendation. I cannot remove a book from the library. I can take one out, you know, but I can't remove it from the collection. And in fact, I've taken out quite a few books over the past couple of months. I cannot remove a book from our collection. The Board of Education cannot remove a book from our collection without going through that process that I discussed. No one coming to that microphone can remove a book from our collection, no matter how impassioned their plea. We have a process, and the process is there to force a pause. Because as we heard from some speakers tonight, humans have learned that if you make rash decisions about deleting knowledge, bad things happen. So we have a process. We pause. We figure it out. No one can take a book out of a library, because we know better than that, without a process and a discussion. It should always be easier to put a book into a library than to delete it from the library. Okay, that's what we're for. So I just want everybody to understand that. The road from the microphone to censorship, the road from the microphone to a bonfire, the road from the microphone to removing materials from our collection for our students, is longer than the distance from that podium to these seats, and I'm thankful for that. There is a process. So rest assured, your advocacy, your concern is, is welcome, as is everyone's here tonight. Um, but rest assured that there is a process to that, uh, and, and that I'm committed to that for, for all of you, as we work so, so hard with you on belonging for all, and each. All right, so thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you to the board for your stamina tonight.
Before we conclude the public meeting, does any other board member have a comment?
I do. I just wanted to say, oops. Wanted to say that board meetings, quite often, I've been on the board now for my sixth year, are tepid, boring affairs. Tonight was not that. Uh, and one of the things that made tonight so much more special than any other board meeting that I've attended, either as a teacher, my prior life, and now as a board member, is the students that are here. Thank you for coming tonight, and, you know, anytime that we have a meeting and there are students present, it makes the meeting that much more special, and that's much more meaningful for us. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Ashard. Anyone else? Yeah, Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes, I'd, I'd just like to echo what Rob said, and, and Lisa, and Dr. Moore. Um, this is hands down, with the exception of a, a few difficult things to hear, the best board meeting that I've ever been to. So I just want to thank everyone who came here tonight, because I learned so much, and I am so hopeful. Um, and it, it's been hard to feel hopeful sometimes, but you, you guys are amazing, and don't ever hesitate to come to a board meeting, as boring as they can be, and, and tell us what's on your mind, because, because we work for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. So can I have a motion to convene, uh, public session, and go into executive session for about, maybe up to 30 minutes, just to discuss, um, HIVs?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will not be taking any action upon return.